Good evening, I will call the Dublin City Council meeting of Monday, July the 29th to order, Ann please call the roll.
Mr. Reiner?
Here.
Mr. Rosa?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Keenan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Here.
Ms. Aludo?
Here.
And Ms. Fox?
Here.
Kathy, could you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. You know, I have the opportunity to present a lot of these proclamations over the last few years, and this has got to be the one that I'm probably the most excited about to present. You guys got to hear this, this is unbelievable, and this gentleman is with us here in the chambers this evening. So, here's how it goes. Whereas National Hockey League Boston Bruin Sean Corrali is the first player raised in central Ohio to compete in the Stanley Cup Finals, and whereas after moving to Dublin from Buffalo at the age of five, Sean attended Dublin City Schools, starting with kindergarten at Chapman Elementary, and then Davis Middle School through his junior year at Dublin Sciota High School, and whereas Sean transferred to the Cathedral High School in Indianapolis for his senior year after being drafted by the Indianapolis ICE of the United States Hockey League, where he played two seasons and earned second-team All USHL honors for the 2011-2012 season, and whereas following in the footsteps of his father Rick, Sean played for Miami University Red Hawks men's hockey team where he was a team captain and scored the game-winning goal against Michigan State University in the quarterfinals of the 2013 Central Collegiate Hockey Association Tournament, and whereas he was named in the 2013 U.S. National Junior Team and helped the United States win gold at the International Ice Hockey Federation World Junior Championship in UFA Russia with the goal and two assists in the tournament, and whereas during his senior year at Miami, he was named National Collegiate Hockey Conference Defensive Forward of the Year and a member of the NCHC Academic All-Conference Team with a GPA of 3.13, and whereas in 2011, he was drafted in the fifth round of the NHL Draft by the San Jose Sharks, but before reporting to California, he was traded to the Boston Bruins. He made his NHL debut on November the 3rd, 2016, and scored a double-overtime goal in game number five of the 2017 Eastern Conference Quarterfinals against the Ottawa Senators. Here's the problematic paragraph, Sean, but I'm going to read through it anyway. Whereas Sean grew up in playing for the AAA Blue Jackets program as a youngster, he scored a goal against the Columbus Blue Jackets in the 2019 Stanley Cup Quarterfinal Game won by the Boston Bruins in front of a CBJ hometown crowd, and whereas he had four goals and six assists in the playoffs, including a game winner in game number one versus the St. Louis Blues in the Stanley Cup Finals, where the Boston Bruins were the runners-up for the 2019 Stanley Cup, and winners of the Prince of Wales Trophy awarded by the NHL to the Eastern Conference Playoff Champions. Now therefore, I, Gregory S. Peterson, Mayor of the City of Dublin, Ohio, on behalf of Dublin City Council do hereby congratulate Sean Corrali on the outstanding season and thank him for the spotlight that he has brought to his hometown of Dublin, Ohio, signed this 29th day of July 2019. (applause). You're going to put this right next to all those trophies you are here. That's fantastic.
So, tell us, tell us...
Well, first of all, thank you very much for having me, and that was a heck of an introduction. I didn't even realize all that. The only thing I would say is, maybe next time we could have left out that GPA, it was a little low.[253.01][253.01](laughter) But, thank you very much. I'm really proud to be from Dublin, and a lot of that has to do with the hard work that you guys do in this room and of the community every week, every day, and I appreciate that. When I get to go around and tell people I'm from Dublin around the NHL, it's a point of pride for me, and it's one that, like you guys, I think are going to show, the Memorial Tournament is kind of like a spotlight that we get to kind of share with at least the guys from our league, and I really appreciate it, and I hope, I'm not going to take too much time, but I hope I can continue to make you guys proud and hopefully be back next summer or one after with even greater accomplishment.
That's absolutely fantastic. The people that come through this community, and you are a perfect example, are absolutely extraordinary. And so, we had Nate Ebner, Ebner, who played in the Super Bowl, and now we got Sean playing in the Stanley Cup Finals, so really fantastic. Any questions from council, anybody you want to ask him anything?
Sean, you have a lot of golfers in that NHL, don't you?
I do.
We get a number of Blue Jackets, I see, playing at the various courses here, not the least of which is the Village, Sciota, and some of the other clubs in town here, so...
Yep, I just came from Kinsale, I just played 11...
You can always tell a hockey player, too, by their swing, because they are...[328.12][328.12](laughter)
That Billy Madison thing, yeah.
Not pretty.[331.87][331.87](laughter)
But they hit it a long way.
Yeah, yeah.
And your folks still live here in Dublin, is that right?
Yes, yes, they do. They, actually, they don't live in Dublin, but they both live in Columbus now, so...
That's fantastic. Well, thanks for taking the time and coming in here, we're really proud to have you from our community, Sean, thanks a lot.
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.[349.69][349.69](applause). Hey, Dan, good luck following that guy.[358.02][358.02](laughter) Hey, Dan, there's a trend here, Miami grad, Miami grad, I'm just saying. There you go. Just saying, yeah, there you go. Miami Red Hawk. It's all yours, Dan, welcome.
Mayor of council, thank you for allowing me a few minutes just to talk about all the good things that came out of the Memorial Tournament. I think I was here maybe a month before the memorial, talking about all the preparation and what we were anticipating, and I would say that we accomplished the goal, there you go, hold on a second, but what we didn't anticipate were three things that we had no control over, that made the week probably the most special we've had in quite some time, and weather played a perfect partner this year. You know, the rain came at night, the temperature during the day was absolutely perfect, and people came out in droves. They came out for Tiger, they came out for every other player, but having Tiger Woods in our field means a heck of a lot to us or any other golf tournament, and you think about, the memorial is the only tournament that he played that wasn't a major between the Masters and the Open Championship, the only regular tour event, and he came here for a lot of reasons. He likes the golf course, he wants to make sure that he's peaking at the right time going in the US Open, loves Jack Nicklaus, and he loves how he's treated here, and we're very fortunate that at 42, he's still playing golf, and that he's able to come join us, and the reaction that he has to the crowd base is truly incredible. And then the economy, I think that we all can recognize that people wanted to get out, and they wanted to spend some time with the friends, their families, their business associates, and it proved out during the week, great crowds, they were willing to spend a little bit of money, have some fun, and enjoy the week, so we couldn't be more thankful that those differentiators came together for us. You know, when we think about Tournament Week, very quickly, we talk about the player reaction, we had 120 of the best in the world come here, Patrick Cantlay ended up winning. Patrick's story is incredible in its own right about where he was just a couple of years ago, and now he's eighth in the world in that Memorial Tournament win, was able to get him there, but overall, the players react extremely favorably to what we have to offer and what Dublin has to offer as a community. Nationwide is enthralled by the relationship that has been created over the last 10 years. We look to keep on growing with them over time, but they use it in so many different ways, thousands of their clients come and be a part of this event during that week, and we're indebted to all their support. The community itself, in so many different ways, and I have a slide here in a second to tell you about all the different stuff we had going on, but just the community and what they do to get behind this event is second to none. Our creative use, and I'll talk about that in a minute, and just the way that we position this golf tournament, not only here in Dublin and throughout central Ohio, but also across the country and in the world, is very unique to, I think, our sport relative to other sports, and allows us to gain momentum. Our attendance was as good as it's been in the last 10 years, and that has a lot to do with those differentiators, but in general, maybe we're doing a little bit better in positioning this tournament in a way that people, a more diverse audience is looking at the tournament younger, people who want to spend a little bit more time than what they have in the past, and we're benefiting from that. And then the collaboration, not only with all of our friends from Nationwide and the PGA Tour, but specifically with Dublin, the things that we're able to do together over time has really helped us create a tournament that looks completely different than it did six years ago. So, from an engagement standpoint, I just want to remind you of all the things that we're doing, I like to say we're not just four days of competitive golf or seven days during the week, but we try to expand throughout our community and throughout a period of time that allows us to really be ingrained and generate some good for many different folks, so, starting with the Legends Luncheon in April, you know all this, April, the Legends Luncheon, May, the concert, Thursday prior, the four-miler, the Friday family night, which we moved on to Tuesday night over at the Safari Golf Course, was a huge success this year, really kind of re-energized that, Jack Hannah came over to be a part of that, and you know, I think we had 1,000 kids and family members over there just enjoying their night. Our volunteer party has grown, we had 2,500 of our volunteers, over 3,500 volunteers show up to a Friday night party before the memorial, huge success, and then the Four Fest, I think all of you recognize that Crawford Hoynes has taken a step to make that bigger and better by going from one to three days. We're proud to partner with them on that, and we see great future in creating an atmosphere around Dublin that's not just golf, that's everything plus golf, and do it in a smart way, a controlled way that's going to make sure that everyone's very proud, but also something that's unique and different that can allow us to just, again, differentiate ourselves from anybody else out there in the golf community. I want to focus on how we got our message out this year, okay? So, it's not just television, it's not just Golf Channel and CBS, although we had over 50 hours of live and tape programming on both of those networks throughout the four days, plus our honorary ceremony on Wednesday, but it's digital media now, so the NBC Gold PGA Tour platform, you can watch it wherever you want, whenever you want, on your phone, it helps build impressions, help gain momentum, because we had a lot to talk about early in the week with Tiger and with Peyton Manning being here on Wednesday, and the response and the number of impressions we had was over 25% compared to the year before. Our social media continues to just grow leaps and bounds, these are our partners that we focus on when we're trying to make sure we're creating a social platform, but I can report that we had over 2.5 million impressions during the week of the tournament through all of our social media platforms. The ability for us, the Memorial Tournament, to partner with this group, these groups, as well as the city of Dublin, and to tell positive stories about what's going on during Tournament Week, and again, it's not just about golf, it's about our patient champions at Nationwide Children's and what to do in Dublin and what to do around the golf course. 2.5 million people responded and looked at the content that we're recreating, and incredible opportunity for us to tell the story. I will share that during Tournament Week, we had what we call influencers, so we had five influencers show up on Friday, you know what they are? You bring them out and they tell the story about what they're doing to their followers, to their following base, and out of those five people, we generated over 200,000 impressions alone on those five people just being out of the golf tournament and walking around and having a drink and eating a sandwich and walking into our venues. What that means to us is that we just, we gain momentum on the brand, we gain an exposure of, it's the place to be, it's not just watching golf, it's about being social and being out in something that's really impactful and different. So, that's on social media. On the earned media side, we had 119 media outlets from six different countries that generated 13 million aggregated readership stories during Tournament Week, incredible amount of exposure that allowed us to tell the story in a right way, and our media guys tell me that out of all of that, they can measure how many stories were positive, how many were negative, and how many were kind of neutral, and out of all 119 outlets, 13 million aggregated readership, we had no negative stories written about the tournament or anything related to it, and that's incredible. So, we're really proud of those facts, and we're most proud that we're able to deliver this tournament from this community to over 220 countries and territories around the world, and it's messages like this that we're really proud of, and Councilman Reiner, I want you to watch and listen.
The Memorial Tournament presented by Nationwide and sponsored by Rocket Mortgage by Quicken Loans. Push button, get mortgage. Chrome Soft from Callaway, the ball that changed the ball. And by Nationwide, for your many sides, there's Nationwide, Nationwide is on your side. Downtown Dublin, paying tribute to the Golden Bear and 2019 Memorial Tournament, I'll read Judy Rankin, what a wonderful town that is, it's just been amazing to see that develop.
They're great.
Storybook.
They're great. Dublin has just absolutely blossomed, and the people have been so supportive, and what a neat little town.
Jack and Jim negotiate which road he has named after him for next year.[917.13][917.13](laughter) Just like his drives, just like his drives, long and straight and then sharply to the right.[923.91][923.91](laughter)
I'll take the one right in front of Tucci's, that would make me very happy. Columbus Zoo and Aquarium, yes, the home of another famous Jack, iconic Jack, it'd be Jack Hannah in that world-famous zoo. It's just a stone's throw from here.
I'm going to do my hair like that for next week.[947.25][947.25](music)
So, the power of television is able to deliver a message that is extremely positive, and we're lucky enough to be able to tell the story very quickly about the community we live in, but also the broader sense of it, right? So, we got Dublin in there, we got Columbus in there, we got the fact that Jack Nicklaus and Jim Nance say it's a cool place to be, I don't know if you can pay for that type of stuff, but that's special for us to be able to do it, and that's been going on for years, but this year, I wanted to focus in on bringing a video in that really just honed in on what the positive attributes are of bringing a professional sporting event into your community. Other properties are able to do this, whether it's NFL, or football, baseball, basketball, hockey, but I think golf has a unique way of telling a story, because it's live and it's kind of comfortable when you're telling it, and I think it lends itself well to telling the Dublin story, so hopefully you appreciate that. When it comes down to collaboration, I want to spend a minute and just make sure I'm recognizing all the things that we're doing together. So, hotel alone, I know Scott's here in the back, and he and I were talking for a minute, I think hotel use was up about 6% or 7% during Tournament Week, which is great, it's positive. I think one of the things we're most positive about is that because of the things that you're doing as council, and frankly, what the community's doing in bringing in new hotels, bringing in more hotel rooms, we are able to communicate that when you come to the Memorial Tournament, you need to stay in Dublin because of the AC Marriott, because of all these different hotels that are now coming along, and our constituents, players, media, CBS, caddies, they're all wanting to stay in Dublin and to be a part of this community, because there's more to do, there's more to do outside of the round of golf, and they realize they can do it right here, just a few months away from the golf course. So, we're really proud of that. Marketing, from an events, media engagement, advertising, community initiatives standpoint, working with Sue and her team, I think it's like a hand in glove, we work so well together, understanding each other's expectations and needs, the unique things that we do as, you know, city of Dublin hosting a dinner on Thursday night for the media is really special and different, not many places do that, and as we continue to evolve and grow, whether it's Four Fest or anything else, we look forward to working with Sue and her team to make sure that we're doing everything right and expanding on all our successes. On the guest engagement, I just want to say thanks for allowing the city and its representation to use the memorial as a backdrop to do business, what you do with your Dublin associates for kind of hosting them for lunch out on Wednesday, and then everything that comes through the villa throughout the week, all those guests, we really appreciate it, because if people aren't using the tournament as a backdrop to do business and to engage in relationships, then we no longer are useful in the community, so thank you for taking a lead and doing that. Security and everything that Dublin PD does, Chief, thank you very much for taking the lead as interim at the time, and congratulations for coming in full-time now, but you and Lieutenant Latanz do an incredible job during Tournament Week, and all your folks, I do know that we're using more Dublin police than we have in the past, and I think that's because of the relationship that we built, and because I think Dublin PD have an interest to represent the community and to be out there, so thank you very much. And all the operations, parking, streets and signs, I want to make sure that I'm recognizing Jason Babiac and Dwayne Nicholas, I think they do a great job in all the signs and the streets and just making sure that we're fluid. Chris Stifler works tirelessly with that group to make sure that everyone knows where the heck they're going when they come in Tournament Week, and then I want to make sure I recognize Alison Leroy and the permit process, not easy, we started that process a couple of years ago, we got to get through it and make sure that we're all buttoned up, because that's the way it should be, and she works extremely well with Chris and the team to put that all together. And my last note is that, before I just say thank you in the end, is that the fence went up on time and it came down on time.[1209.58][1209.58](laughter) Thank you.
Thank you, Dan, and you are quite a gem for the tournament to have and for us to have here, working with our community. You know, Dan and I had an opportunity to see a presentation that Dan did a while ago, and he is functioning at an extremely high level, he's the Tiger Woods of the executive directors, and what you do for that tournament, what you do for this community is greatly appreciated.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks. Anybody else, any other comments? Michael, anything?
Just thank you for training the CBS sports guys to know where they're at and where the tournament actually took place.
Took 44 years.[1245.14][1245.14](laughter)
Way to go, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did Craig Barnum have to pay for that paid publicity?
Yeah, I know, how about that? I expect...
Wow.
Exactly, no doubt.
Perfect, thank you very much, Dan, for coming in.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate your time.
Have a good night.
Citizen comments, I don't have any citizen people that have signed in to make any comments, however, if anybody wants to raise their hand, we'll give you five minutes, you can talk about whatever you want to about, and we will listen to you. I don't see any hands, so we will keep moving right along onto the consent agenda, there are more than the typical number of items, there are nine items on the consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove any one of those items? Hearing none, I will then make a motion that we approve the nine items on the consent agenda, is there a second?
A second.
Ann?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Onto the postponed items, I make a motion that we postpone ordinance 34-19 to the August 12th committee meeting, is there a second?
Second.
Ann?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Outstanding.
Resolutions, Resolution 38-19, Ann?
Accepting lowest and best bid for the 2019 pavement repair program.
I will introduce it, Paul.
Members of council, I'll give you a brief overview of the staff report for this resolution and also the next. On July 9th, we opened four bids for the 2019 pavement repair program, that is, just as it says, partial depth asphalt spot repairs throughout the city. The engineer's estimate for this work was $320,000, the budgeted funds within the CIP were $545,000. Strauss Pavings Company submitted the lowest and best bid in the amount of $233,895, which was 26.9% below the engineer's estimate. The project is scheduled to be complete by November 1st, we will use our normal communication methods with all of our residents as we do with all of our maintenance projects. In terms of Strauss Pavings, we have great experience with them, they've always done great work for us, we would expect the same on this project, and staff recommends your approval of this resolution this evening.
Any questions from council?
I have just a couple, thank you, a couple meetings ago, you gave us a tally sort of where we were in terms of expenses of these bids opening, some of them were over budget, some of them are under budget. Is there a point in time where there might be funds left over that maybe we could advance the ball on some maintenance items that maybe we had thought perhaps we would wait for next year? Is there kind of a date on the calendar that you'd circle and say, well, listen, we have, you know, 7%, 10%, 12% of the budget left, we could bite a little bit off that we were planning on next year?
I think it would be most appropriate to find out from engineering, since they're the biggest driver of those, when the majority of their bids will be done and wrapped up, so we at least have a baseline going into that conversation, so I guess I'll turn to you, Paul, and...
Yeah, really the only effective way for us to do that is do that by change order to existing contracts, many of these projects require design, which takes time, and then secondarily, from the time we bid to the time we really get to you and get under contracts, about six weeks, so there really isn't much time left in the year for us to do that effectively, and I think we're doing a good job on maintaining what we have, and there's just pluses and minuses, you'll see that with the next resolution, and the one thing you're not seeing in this is, you know, out of this program was $150,000 for crack sealing, you know, another element of our pavement maintenance program, so I know it looks like we've got a lot of money left over here, that $545,000, but in the end, we're about $161.5 to the good, just in this one line account.
Totally, thanks.
Go ahead.
I'll make sure in your next packet, you have an updated tally of those project status.
Great, thank you.
I was just going to add, too, that as we roll towards the end of the year, we'll have the CIP process for the next five, there's always a chance at the end of the year, when we have much more clarity, we go into next year, we look at what's saved, what's going to be advanced into the next budget cycle, but we could also take a snapshot and go, okay, even though you've already adopted the next five year, and then we see how things come in the end of the year, we could always then take a look at, are there some things we might want to move up?
Some contingency projects, if the budget would allow?
Probably bow towards the end of the year, early in the next...
Thank you.
Did you have something, Dan?
Yeah, I guess my question was, then the CIP, there's 545, and you're saying this project was tree 20, so there's another project that makes up that delta, is that what we're saying?
Yeah, there's another part of this, our pavement maintenance, which is really our crack sealing, which is, I think, under the state contract.
Okay.
So, that contract was just under $150,000.
Any other questions on this resolution? Hearing none, Ann?
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Resolution 39-19?
Accepting lowest and best bid for the 2019 vehicular bridge maintenance, France Road at Cosgrave Creek project.
I will introduce it, Paul.
So, two days later, on July 11th, we received two bids for our vehicular maintenance, bridge maintenance program, which is really France Road at Cosgrave Creek, it's a replacement of a 13-and-a-half-foot-by-five-foot box culvert with a new box culvert. The engineer's estimate for this project was $645,000, while the budgeted funds were $745,000, which is 10, and Complete General Construction submitted the lowest and best bid in the amount of $713,326.91, which is 10.6% over the engineer's estimate, so the pendulum swung the other way on this project. Staff anticipates this work will commence in either late August or early September just due to the delivery of the box culvert itself, which has to be manufactured, we will maintain traffic on France Road during this construction, previous experience with Complete General Construction has always been favorable, we have great experience with them as well, and staff does recommend approval of this resolution this evening.
Questions on this one, Chris?
Is the lifespan on the box culvert a lot longer than the three-sided culvert?
Typically, yes, because the production, you know, methods are much better, much improved today than they were many years ago.
How old was the existing box culvert, any idea?
I don't have that data, but I know it was, I believe, over 30 years old, it went in when France Road was improved, so 30 to 40 years ago, I believe, to be true.
Any other questions from council? Ann?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Thanks, Paul. Resolution 40-19?
Approving and accepting the plat for Wyandotte Woods, Section 10.
I will introduce it, Claudia.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, we are here tonight with actually three resolutions that all involve plaits, and this is something that has come up in our work with Franklin County, that they have requested that plaits be, from now on, passed as a resolution, it will help them with research in the future so that there is a number associated with those, and in working with the law director's office as well as with Ann's help, we have actually figured out that we have always done plaits as a other item and never as a resolution since the 80s, but from now on, since this is a Franklin County requirement, we're moving forward with all of our plaits being resolutions, and so you will have three here in succession tonight, and we'll start with Wyandotte Woods, which is Wyandotte Woods, Section 10, and that is for 32 single-family lots, you have it there on your screen, and that is in the Wyandotte Woods subdivision, one of the last sections to keep platted for single-family homes. The Planning and Zoning Commission actually reviewed this way back in 2016, and it's just been a slower construction process in this particular neighborhood, so with that, our recommendation, as well as the Planning Commission recommendation, would be for approval of this plat, and I can answer any question, and there is also an engineer here representing the applicant.
Claudia, are any of these three-car garages, or are they all two-car st... Claudia, are any of these three-car garages, or are they all two-car still?
Majority, based on the size of the lots, is probably a two.
Claudia, there was a lot of conversation in the planning meeting minutes about pond maintenance and things. There doesn't appear to be any green space associated with these specific lots, or is the green space contribution somewhere else in Wyandotte Woods for these lots? And the ponds that are referred to, those are the ponds that are owned by the HOA?
Indeed. So, it's a yes on both of your questions. So, Wyandotte Woods has developed in all of the sections since 2005, maybe even the late 90s. And there is a lot of open space allocated throughout the neighborhood. So, some sections come without it, some sections have a lot. The pond that actually takes care of stormwater management for this particular section is the one that is also shared with the multifamily Hawthorne Commons, that is a little bit closer to the high school there.
Recently constructed?
Yeah.
Were there any fees in lieu of green space or trees, or were they able to find homes for those on this development?
For Wyandotte Woods, in and of itself, there was not ever a dedication, or there was not a fee in lieu of open space. Tree replacement has been continuously monitored, and there are some replacement inches that have actually been placed near Hawthorne Commons, but those were actually from that particular development. They were not, they were not part of this particular neighborhood.
But they did meet all of the
Yeah.
requirements for open space?
Yes, absolutely, and more so.
Thank you.
Claudia, the Forest and Funded Homeowners Association, are you happy with this?
So...
Do you know what the assessment is per home?
I do not, off the top of my head, know that. I know Wyandotte Woods is a little bit divided in terms of a distinct higher amount of fees that are farther to the south, when it gets closer to Riverside Drive. But in terms of people paying fees or having maintenance, we have not heard any complaints with any of the new or existing residents.
So, from now on, when you come with one of these plats, please check to make sure that the homeowners association is funded correctly, so that they don't appear 10 years from now and ask us to take over mowing their grass, taking care of their ponds. So, I think it should be a very important part of your job to make sure that's happening on the ground plane. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from council? Hearing none. Anne?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Resolution 41-19.
Approving and accepting the plat for the Autumn Rose Woods, Section 2 subdivision.
I will introduce it. Claudia, since you're still standing there.
Thank you. So, this is for the remainder of Autumn Rose. This will get platted in two sections. Section 1 was already approved by council, and there is construction taking place at the moment. So, this is for 30 acres, 36 single-family lots, including also the estate lot, which is the home that is remaining within that subdivision to the rear. And there are 17 acres of woods, open space dedicated to the city as part of this development, which is in the, in the western portion of the site. And again, the Planning Commission has reviewed this in August of 2017, and also recommended approval to City Council. And at the same time, we also approved the final development plan for this particular section of the subdivision.
Questions from council? Hearing none. Anne?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Resolution 42-19.
Approving and accepting the plat for the Riviera West subdivision.
I will introduce it. Once again, Claudia.
And then, last but not least, we are doing this a little bit in an unusual way in terms of these 13 and 1/2 acres that were left over from the Riviera development, and they are currently zoned rural district in Union County. And the applicant has chosen to move forward with a preliminary plat, and then will also have a final plat approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the plat in June of this year, and the lot sizes here are between an acre, acre and 1/3, which would meet the underlying zoning. And the applicant is proposing to use that rural zoning as their development standards for this particular subdivision. So, like I said, it's 11 lots, and the total acreage of open space dedicated is 1.3, which exceeds the requirement of open space that the subdivision regulations would require to be dedicated. And one of the things that council does not typically see, because usually that's taken care of in a planned unit development, is that the applicant has requested variances from the subdivision regulations, which the subdivision regulations do allow for that to take place. Planning Commission has approved those as well. And it ultimately has to do with a lot of the geometry requirements for public streets. And we have conferred with engineering, and really, everything the applicant is proposing meets what every other neighborhood, every other subdivision in the city has. It's just that that typically is taken care of throughout the zoning process, but the subdivision regulation process is another avenue that that can happen. So, there are five variances that the applicant is requesting, and it has to do with the right-of-way width for their public street that they're proposing, the diameter of the cul-de-sac, the pavement width, the diameter of the cul-de-sac, again, for pavement, as well as the subdivision require an island within a cul-de-sac. And really, from a planning and engineering standpoint, those tend to not do so well in terms of people just driving over the curbs, and maintenance is an issue. So, we typically don't see islands in these types of geometries. So, this is more of a twofold request, but like I said, the planning department, as well as engineering, are supportive of that request, as is the Planning and Zoning Commission.
And those variances are built into what we're voting on?
Yes, absolutely.
Right. Chris?
So, this will not be part of the Riviera PUD?
Correct.
So, I know a lot of that language governed. Will they participate in the HOA of Riviera? How will that work?
They would have their own HOA.
Okay. I did speak with Dr. Hoadley about, he attended this meeting, and he went over the, I can't recall the exact number he told me, but I think it was like 63 nights a year, that this isn't a football stadium. It hosts seven home games. This is, this is an athletic facility for the high school that
Correct.
It has lights and music, and lots, bands practice every day. I know when the, I was on the Planning Commission when the baseball diamonds were problematic for the adjacent neighbors.
Yeah.
What have we done to mitigate the lessons we learned from the baseball diamonds? And then, we went in and built mounds and all sorts of things to try to help the people that built houses next to the baseball stadium not be next to a baseball stadium? What about this is going to be different than that?
The number that Dr. Hoadley quoted, I think, was more in the hundreds. It was active. It very much is a concern to the schools. I think, to some extent, there was some comfort level that the stadium is there, and that people picking out lots will notice that there is this activity going on. They won't notice that it is as busy, certainly.
Can we add a condition, at this point, to this plat, that it is adjacent to an active area, and that there will not be any modifications made to the neighboring properties to accommodate these individual residences?
I, we certainly can add language. I'm not sure if we're helping people help themselves, but, I mean, we can, we can certainly add a note on the plat that would note
They don't read the plat.
I want to
What could you have?
Well, I want something that we can say, hey, listen.
It says that.
We can't, we're not going to ask the schools to spend another $150,000 on a mound in spruce trees, because you built your house next to a football stadium.
What if the developer, if we required the developer or the builders to have a signed document signing off that they recognize there's a stadium back there, and there will be a lot of activity, games, noise, and lights? Is that possible to do?
The method, to me, is not nearly as important as the result.
We've had the same conversation with firehouses nearby and so forth, and they always complain. Doesn't matter what you do, where
Road tracks, you name it, yeah.
The baseball fields were problematic for quite a while.
Oh, that was, that was a very difficult and divisive issue. So, Jennifer, what is it that we can do?
I think a note in the plat will be most effective. I mean, again, we are just reviewing plat. We have limited discretion, and so inserting that note, being able to point to that note in the future, and then the fact that the stadium is already there, I think those two in conjunction, maybe working with the developer to advertise that. And we've talked about inserting different things in advertising materials as well. This will come back for a final plat review, so you will see this again. But again, the discretion's limited, but we
Our discretion is property lines, establishment of easements, and I think a noise easement would be appropriate here as well, or not a noise easement, as might be the case here, open space dedication or lack thereof. I think there, I think there are some things that are in our purview here that we need to get on here, because I did, I sat in the, I was the chair of the Planning Commission at the time, and it was a very, these people were angry. And by golly, there was baseball being played on the baseball diamond behind their house, and it was 8:30 at night, and their two-year-old needed to get to bed. And I don't, this is a much grander problem.
Yep.
And these homes are, you know, if you buy an acre and 1/2, or whatever it is, these homes are going to be a significant investment.
Perhaps we could put a condition saying staff will work with the applicant to incorporate notification requirements prior to filing final
Or staff not going to work with the applicant to mitigate the noise, that that's on the applicant to do.
We could, right. And we can bring options to you for final plat.
I'd like to see
So, you'll see
Yeah, I would like to see some, too, and maybe it's also as they set up their HOA, advising them on how they might communicate that with potential homeowners as well.
That's the key, because if you resell
Yep.
I mean, nobody's going to go back and look
No, they're not. They're going to look at the HOA rules. That's just how it works. What about parking? I mean, people are going to park back there. Look how close it is to the stadium. Well, you have the same problem with Yeah, it's the same problem. But, I mean, it's monitored, and no parking zones are there. I would imagine we would sign and do the same things we did across from Kaufman High School and everywhere else. Yeah, like fencing's ever kept out a teenager?
It's not fenced.
It's not. I'm just saying.
In the way of an easement, there's only a 30-foot landscape buffer. It's one of the things we discussed of planning and zoning, and it was left up to each homeowner to put landscaping there. Is there any way that we, as council, can, in creating easement and a no disturb or a noise easement, require that to be landscaped in a deeper way, so that you can buffer some of the noise, along with some of the other recommendations?
Well, they can do whatever they want on their portion of the property. I think that, I think the, my issue is, is that we're not going to require it on the school's property. If they want to build mounds in their backyard and put spruce trees in, then have at it. That's, that's part of their landscape package.
No, I'm just saying, in saying yes to the plat, is there a way that the plat can include a dedicated landscape noise easement?
Well, the plat on the west side does include a 30-foot landscape buffer, no build zone area. So, all of the lots on that western edge have that 30-foot.
Right. It's not very deep, though.
The applicant is using
That's a first down.
Yeah, that's not very deep. 30 foot's not much.
One of the things that we're, been working with them on is that there are inches that need to be replaced as part of this development. The code only allows an applicant to replace inches with deciduous trees. So, any kind of evergreen?
I thought we addressed that with a measurement, a height measurement on evergreens. We had discussed that in the
It's in the waiver.
Okay.
It's not in the code, and we would not necessarily think that they would be eligible for a waiver, because the waiver criteria, we're talking about very heavily wooded sites, or more heavily wooded sites, I guess.
Jennifer, if you and Claudia could really work hand-in-hand to make sure that we have gone all 11 yards that we possibly can to not have to have such a contentious conflict when this all comes to pass.
Does that require a motion, Jennifer?
So, we'll need to add a condition.
Okay.
So
So, we would have, we would request for you to do two motions. One is to approve the variances, just so that the record is cleaner, which really has to do with the streets and the geometry and the pavement width. And then, we would add this condition that the applicant work with staff to incorporate language and update HOA rules for buffering and noise awareness.
So, you want three votes? A vote on the variance?
No, it would just be two.
A vote on what we just talked about, and a vote on the resolution?
So, a vote on the variance?
Is a vote on the resolution?
And then, yes. And the resolution is actually comprised of two votes, effectively. There's the variance, and that's kind of procedural, and then you'll be approving the final plat with the added condition that we work on notification.
Okay, so that added condition is the second vote?
Correct.
That's the vote on the resolution?
Correct.
Okay. Then I make a motion, we approve the plat with the five variances that are on this show.
I have two more questions before we go to that. The one question is, there was a lot of discussion about connectivity to the school site. Where are we on that?
So, we've been working with the schools, and actually, Mr. Hammer Smith has taken on a meeting with Jeff Stark from schools just last week, and there are some preferred paths being explored. We would fully expect that to be part of the final plat, that we would then bring forward to Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as to you for ultimate final approval.
Right. And then, the second one, that was about the fact that the Planning and Zoning Commission really felt that it was important that there was connectivity over to the schools through this development, so that kids, because they're going to cut 3 yards, one way or the other. And so, we wanted to be sure that the shared-use path, which you can see on this drawing, doesn't go towards the schools. It just goes around the pond and around the properties to the east. I think that's to the east. And there was no direct route, other than at the street, to get to the schools, so you know kids are going to be kids, and they're going to cut through. And so, we required some specific connectivity, and that will occur, I'm assuming. And then the other question is, and I do not remember this during planning and zoning, that the city would maintain these stormwater ponds?
Correct. So given the fact that both of those open spaces are immediately adjacent, flow more or less without really any kind of distinct boundary into open spaces within Riviera, it seemed to behoove all of us to have the maintenance to be continued exactly how it is currently taking place in Riviera. So that was something that we had requested.
It's just that we had this conversation quite a bit about how we're going to keep up the maintenance on these ponds. And, and I don't know what the HOA costs here. And maybe that's a policy decision we are going to have to come up with.
Didn't we have that discussion?
We had that discussion.
I'm trying to remember, didn't we have the discussions that we were going to do that?
Sure we did. Long discussion.
Yeah. That we weren't going to do that, right?
Right. So Claudia.
I feel like we have this discussion every time. And in this particular instance, I want to point, I never have a pointer. This pond right here, if you can see this, is a pond that is dual purpose. So it takes care of stormwater management within Riviera as it exists today. And then will also take stormwater management on for this new portion of Riviera as well as for Casio Street, which is that east-west connector to Highland Croye from Riviera. So from a, I just don't know how we would maintain half of a pond, if I may, because we're already taking care of the pond as it is today and all the open spaces around it. And Riviera, quite frankly, was a very, very unique maintenance scheme at the time that it was zoned and developed, very different from what we have elsewhere in the city. So it.
We're already doing a whole lot there. And the difference is, is that we're already maintaining a lot of that ground.
Yeah. So it seemed to really make sense for us to continue with incorporating these 13 acres and make it fit across the board in this particular instance. We certainly have had conversations with other neighborhoods that have gone in a different directions. Hamlet comes to mind here recently.
So Reserve A, is that a retention or a detention basin?
They're both wet.
They're both wet?
Yes.
Okay. Now that one is totally on their property, right? Within the subdivision.
It is totally on their property. However, adjacent on all sides except for the north is open space in Riviera.
Okay. But I thought we had a discussion, we all agreed that taxpayers weren't going to pay for any more of this pond maintenance for these different subdivisions. And that the homeowners who enjoyed the ponds or fished out of the ponds or had the ponds, part of their HOA was going to pay for this. And that's, the big question is, how much is the HOA? Does it cover all the maintenance? Does it cover the area along the street? Because I really don't want to see any more of these because I think it's grossly unfair to have the taxpayers picking up the expense. Pond maintenance is very expensive, between the pumps and all the other things that you've got to do. I'd hate to see the city constantly drug into one thing after another. Because this is a, a big expense for, for the community. So to have these things always excluded and then not know how much the HOA is. And again, this thing's got 11 lots. And how many times we have people come in here in the last 20 years saying, well, you know, we only got 10 lots. We can't pay for our HOA. We need the city to mow, to take care of all our stuff for us. No. That's morally wrong, unethical, uh-uh.
I do want to say that.
Just as a reminder, CSAC is looking at your stormwater pond maintenance program. I think in this case, it got a little gray because of the connectivity, who was putting water in it, which is part of what we were doing as well as the connectivity to the.
The city is dumping water in from Casio Lane.
So it's already being used that way. So your point was that we can't maintain half a pond and draw a barrier because everything's going to migrate across the entire waterway.
You do have a single, you do have a single developer on this entire place that can force cross partnerships with the association. So, you know, this can be a sub-association of the master association where everyone is paying into a common pot in which these costs are divided up.
And those details I am not sure of yet because MI really has taken over a large portion of Riviera. And this is not an MI project that we're looking at here tonight.
Well, I, the, I'd like to see the language about noise from the, from the stadium. And then I'd like us to pursue whatever amendments are happening to this development agreement, address the pond maintenance issues.
So is it reasonable that it's split in that the city's contributing to it off of the right of way?
Sure, if we have a percentage, whatever the cubic volume is of that, that pond, if it, you know, 10% of it's from us, then.
Okay, we're going to have to just report back on that, I don't know.
Can I ask just one other question, Clay? When you scroll down and you get to the overhead photograph of this, I don't know if you can do that up there or not. But it looks like up there, there are two different wet ponds, is that right?
There currently is a pond.
There is a pond on here. And when you get down to the picture a couple of pages later, the, the shape of the pond looks much, much different than what's on that plat. Are they reconfiguring, reconstructing the pond?
That was a golf course pond. That was like on number, I think that was like number 11 right there. That.
So from this photo, they're reconstructing the one that's in the photo and building the second one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't know, Dana, what do, what do we do?
So again, this is preliminary plat. And so it's going to come back to you for a final plat. So could we add another condition saying we will address stormwater maintenance responsibility prior to final plat approval?
Okay.
No, I'd really like to know how this HOA is going to function too.
I say we just bring it back.
I mean, because I don't know whether to table this or bring it back.
I recommend tabling.
Okay, I make a motion that we table Resolution 42-19 as our second. Thanks, Mike, Ann.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan? Vice Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Thank you, Claudia. Under the other portion of our agenda, USA Archery alcohol waiver request. Matthew.
Good evening, members of council and your packet. There is an alcohol waiver request from USA Archery. They have scheduled another event with us at Dari Fields to host the 2019 National Target Championships, the U.S. Open, and the first stage of the 2020 U.S. Olympic Trials. This event will be held at Dari Fields between August 14th and August 17th. They will be working in conjunction with H Archers, which I see Chris here in the, in the audience this evening. Chris Worthing is with Ace Archers. We're also working with the Dublin Conventions and Visitors Bureau as well as our event staff and Police Department towards the planning of this event. Obviously, the consumption of alcohol will only be consumed by non-competitors and those that are eliminated by the competition. We have worked with.
What could go wrong?
Pardon?
What could go wrong?
They go, they fly a lot straighter, I heard. We have worked with USA Archers for several events. And we are comfortable with this request and are recommending approval. I or Chris are here to answer any questions if you have them.
Questions from council.
You think Ron Whittington's comfortable with this, just out of curiosity?
Ron is part of the event permit.
Okay, if Ron's good with it, I'm good with it.
Any other questions from council? Hearing none, Ann?
Ms. Fox, did you want to?
Well, wait, I guess I need to make a motion to approve serving alcohol at the Dari Fields outlined in the memo. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
As to ordinance 12-19, I make a motion that we remove from the table and schedule for a hearing. Second reading on the, at our August 12th council meeting. This has to do with the Nexian LLC Economic Development Agreement. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ann?
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Emerald Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan? Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
And Ms. Aluto?
Yes.
Debt policy follow-up. Angel.
Good evening, members of council. As you are aware, on April 3rd, you held a work session to discuss the city's debt policy. At that meeting, council members requested additional ratios that could be reviewed in conjunction with the city's existing debt policy to determine the appropriateness of the level of debt and specifically as it pertains to the proposed CIPs that are reviewed by council annually. So this evening, as outlined in your memo, I will present four optional metrics that council could consider. Additionally, attached as part of your package was proposed revisions to the existing debt policy. I had a clean copy in there as well as a redline version. So just as a reminder, the city's approved debt policy, which was adopted by council in 2016, reviewed in 2017 and reaffirmed in 2018, really formalized in existing practice, a longstanding practice of the city, that basically allocated of the 25% of the income tax revenue dedicated to the capital improvement tax fund, 60% to retire debt service and allocating the remaining 40% to cash fund capital projects. Furthermore, as you are all aware, our debt policy as it stands today limits the amount that can be programmed for debt service to 90% of that amount, 90% of that 60% amount. That's to protect against fluctuations in income tax revenues. So we're not spending every possible dollar coming in. So in response to council's request for additional metrics, I came up with four different options. It's important to keep in mind that there is no prescribed playbook for this. There's no right or wrong, there's no right or wrong percentage. So I would simply offer that you keep that in mind as we go through these. These are simply options that council could consider. And when coming up with these, I really tried to look at metrics that were meaningful. You can compare numbers all day long, but if it has nothing to do with how we pay debt service or funds that can be used for debt service, they're metrics for the sake of comparing numbers, in my opinion. So the four that I've proposed to you this evening, the first is the general fund balance as a percentage of expenditures. The guideline providing that our general fund balance should be greater than or equal to 50% of our expenditures. Indeed, this one should look familiar to you because it is exactly the same as our general fund balance policy. But the rationale for using this metric in conjunction with reviewing the city's debt levels is that while it's not currently utilized, the general fund balance can be used to pay debt service. So any amount that we have in excess of our existing policy minimum of 50% means that resources could be utilized, if push came to shove, to pay that debt service without even tapping into the 50% reserve level. So this is just as simple, does it meet, is our general fund balance in excess of 50%, yes or no? At the end of 2018, we had a fund balance that was almost 75%. The second metric really plays off that first one and specifically looks at the amount of our general fund balance in excess of the 50%. So what I did with this one is looked at that level in excess of 50% and measured that against our debt service for the upcoming year. And I said that would, and again, no right or wrong on the percentages, but if we stipulated a guideline that said the general fund balance that is in excess of 50% should be able to cover at least 50% of the debt service payments for the upcoming year. So when we look, for example, at where we were at the end of 2018, our general fund balance was approximately $57.2 million. That provided us with a fund balance in excess of our 50% reserve of almost $19 million. 50% of our 2019 debt service payments was approximately $9 million. So does it meet the guideline? Yes, it does. So again, similar to that first metric, this one really reinforces that if you lost, in the case of 2018, if we lost all of our income revenue that could be used to pay debt service, we could pay 100% of our income tax-supported debt service from our reserve. And not just our reserve, but the amount that we have above 50%. So we could not even touch the 50% and still, in this case, pay 100% of our debt service. I feel like 100% is a bit too conservative perhaps. So I chose 50% just to, as a starting point for a discussion. The third metric measures the general fund balance as a percentage of revenue. And that's based on a five-year trend. The guideline indicating that the percent change in the general fund balance over five years should be greater than or equal to 0%, so positive. And ultimately, what the rationale behind this metric is that we want to show a structural balance. And we want to show whether our reserves are increasing in relation to our budgetary growth as measured by revenues. And you can see that over the course of the past five years, we have had positive growth in our fund balance, comparing the current year versus five years before relative to our, our growth in income tax revenues. Indeed, that amount has slowed down largely because our, our income tax revenues have gotten, the growth in income tax revenues has slowed. And certainly, we have made some strategic purchases out of our general fund, lowering that fund balance, which we've discussed in the past. And then finally, the fourth metric is to measure income tax-supported debt compared to operating revenue, with the guideline being that debt to operating revenue should be less than or equal to 10%. The rationale behind this metric is that while income tax revenue is pledged, is, is really the basis for all of our repayment of our debt, the reality is, is that we have many other revenue sources, not even including TIF, but charges for services, fines, fees, permits, licenses. Those revenue sources can all be used to pay debt service, not just income tax revenues. So I think it's appropriate to look at all of those sources and then do a comparison of what is your debt level compared to the revenues that you have to pay that debt. And again, using numbers from 2018, actuals versus our 2019 debt service payments, we had approximately $86 million in operating revenues with $5 million of debt service payments supported by income tax revenues. That gives us a percentage of 5.9% meeting the guideline. Again, these are simply four optional metrics that could be utilized. We feel confident in saying that I believe our existing debt policy is one that provides sufficient protections against declining revenues, namely, the fact that we conservatively estimate revenues. And secondly, you've got that built-in protection that only allows us to program up to 90% of that amount. For that reason, I do not recommend incorporating any additional metrics into the debt policy itself. However, we have proposed some other changes to the debt policy. Most of them are minor, simply reflecting the current market conditions. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on those. But one in particular that I'd like to draw your attention to was requested by council at the April 3rd work session, appropriately so, which incorporated language that, that basically codifies our practice of where there's not 110% coverage for our TIF-supported debt, we're going to carve out a piece of that, that income tax allocation so that if there's a fluctuation in TIF revenues downward, we've got enough flexibility within our income tax allocation. So we had been doing that, this simply puts it in writing in the policy. So that is in Section 9, the debt limitation section of the policy. But again, the other changes are really minor in nature. And we would recommend bringing those back for council approval at the next council meeting. But certainly, I'm willing to answer any questions you have about the metrics that I have proposed here this evening.
Any questions from council? Kathy, go.
Angel, thank you very much. I appreciate these. One of the things I particularly liked about them is that they were high-level and fairly, fairly easy to calculate. So hopefully, that doesn't add to the workload. When I thought about these, I thought if I looked at metric one and two, they seemed, as you stated, you know, fairly reinforcing to the current policy and practice. So while I think they're, they're illuminating and useful, I was particularly interested in the additions of three and four. So one and two makes sense to me. I'm not, I'm not sure how much more coverage that gives us, as you said, from where we are. Three and four, what I liked about it is that the first two were really more about debt coverage. And the three and four really, I think, answered the questions that I was interested in exploring. And that is overall debt levels. And giving us a longer-term look at or window into if our operating revenues, at our tax revenues, are moving in a certain direction, what is, what is, that gives us a window into what the tax appetite. And I think those are, I really like them because I think it really helps us do that. I don't know, like in the last one, whether we should include all the different pieces and parts. Because really, if we think about things like sevatar revenues and stuff, I'm not sure we would. Those are really as flexible. So, you know, I don't know that they would all need to be in there. I think from my perspective, just looking at the big bucket helps us answer those questions. If we have so much in revenue coming in and it's trending in our debt, I think that is a very nice ratio that helps us say, hmm. As you said, we're seeing the impact when, when revenues are soft and what that means in our ability to do coverage. So for me, I appreciate it. I particularly think that adding the last two would help us have that longer look. The only other comment that I would have is so, because so much of our ability to finance thing are TIF-related, I appreciate codifying the coverage. As I was thinking about the last two metrics, what came to my mind is, is there a similar type thing we could do on that, on the TIF side? Because I, I think that is such a big bulk of where we're going. So I don't know if what I just said made sense or not, but.
It does. Let me give some thought to that. The challenge when we talk about TIF ones, TIF-supported debt service, especially given our vast number of TIFs that we have, is that all TIF revenue can't be used to pay all TIF-supported debt. It's very unique to a particular debt service or a particular project that might be funded by one or two or five different TIFs. So I would need to think through how we could maybe incorporate something related to TIF revenues.
I don't know, because I, again, I think the last two really do highlight what I was interested in looking at. And that is to give us a trended look at, at that coverage. And so you're right, when I think about that, that's maybe complicated. Maybe it's only the larger ones where, where we're going to see some of that risk. But I think personally, the addition of those last two will help us ask and look at the level. Again, first is more coverage, the last two to me are more level indicators. And I would, I would advocate for adding those, at least the last two myself, to that. So thank you. So, thank you.
I thought it was all very interesting. I wouldn't disagree with, you know, it's such good information, and it's really well-rounded and balanced and presented in such a neutral, here it is. I don't have any interest in making any changes to our debt policy. I think that it's a good debt policy. The only thing I would change probably is in our practice, is when we project out, oftentimes, we don't project new projects, you know, four, five years out, and it would be more in this CIP practice portion of saying, okay, in the last 10 years, we've averaged, make up a number, $12 million in CIP projects a year, right? And just put that placeholder number in there that would help us determine our future debt, because we know there's going to be a project, we just don't know what the project's going to be yet. And so to leave it blank is a little troubling for me, because we're making decisions thinking that we don't have a looming expense, where we do have a looming expense, we just don't know, are we going to build a vehicular bridge at John Shields? Are we going to do, you know, some of these things in the future? So probably the full five years.
Understand, because our CIP's out five years.
Right, but we tend to have a few projects in the, you know, two- and three-year term. Sometimes you're in four and five, we don't have those larger numbers. At least, it hasn't been that way in the last two years. We've assumed that there maybe isn't a project.
Yes, and your point is well-taken, in that, you know, if we look at the beyond section, there are some, you know, John Shields Parkway Bridge is just one that comes to mind that you mentioned. So there are some big projects out there.
And maybe we don't list the big project, maybe we average what the project amount has been over the last 10 years, or whatever time period you think makes sense. I don't know the answer to that question. I would just like a placeholder of projects likely to be $12 million in '24, or whatever that number is going to be, which would help us to make the debt decisions now and not, you know, we're giving ourselves $12 million in a subsequent year for what might be available to us at that point in time.
I think that it allows us an opportunity to almost think about what type of a variable would make sense for us in those outer years, in years four and five. I agree, I don't think we need to necessarily change the debt policy itself. I think these are really valuable questions to ask in the process, and maybe that's something we talk about, is adding questions such as these, because I tend to agree that it gives us a nice sort of year-over-year look at where things are trending, but I don't know that I necessarily think it should be part of the policy. I think it is difficult when you get out into years four and five of a CIP to say, we don't know what's coming. But on the other side of that coin, if you don't understand and sort of contemplate that there's, that we know there's going to be projects coming, even though we don't know what they are, or maybe it's something that we project is going to be in the out years, six or seven, that for some reason or another, we need to move up into years four or five the next year. And I think that's kind of what Chris is getting at. So, you know, that's why I sit with it, I don't know that I want to change the policy per se, I think it's a good debt policy. I do think that the metrics are very interesting, and something that we might think about actually asking ourselves those questions as we go through the process each year.
Well, what you were just saying about if you had a fairly standard additional add by the addition of that third and fourth metric, you can model that, because you can model what you estimate the revenue, because we do. We are modeling what we're estimating the operating expenses, which we do, and you now have a metric that's in a fairly easy way to say, this is what it's going to do to that trend.
Yep.
And hopefully, that wouldn't be very complicated, maybe a little bit easier than the work that we did this last year on that, but it trends the exact same thing. Are we seeing that ratio move to the point where that makes us uncomfortable or not, and combining those two things?
It's almost like our conservative revenue estimating, right?
Yeah.
It would be our liberal, and we estimate expenses rather liberally. We do that on our operating budget really well, and I don't know that, and maybe we need to just take that process a little bit and add it more to the CIP of, say, we don't know what, you know, are these expenses in the future, maybe we need to make them more liberal so that we don't run out of room.
I think, I hear it on clear, I think that's good exercise. I think if you really look at the beyond column in the five-year CIP, is where you'll see that future, over-the-horizon look that we are aware of, that we know we can identify. And a lot of times, those are the result of traffic analysis and potential developments and things like that. So the modeling, I would suggest, maybe, you know, we go through the CIP, we have a recommendation on the maintenance and potential new projects that are staring us in the face. Hopefully, there's some capacity left in there. We've been pretty tight with the, been pretty aggressive too, which is, I think, fairly a good thing, given the opportunities. I think you'll see in this CIP a little bit more opportunity to maybe model that a little bit, especially in the out years.
You look at the 1370 crossing.
Especially in the out years, but I...
Some big-ticket items.
If you get that in place, you know what your gap, then you can model after that, and you've always got the flexibility to move things in, or to keep looking out and bringing those things into that beyond column and pulling them forward, so...
But we haven't had that so much in the debt piece of looking forward in debt, you know, we've kind of assumed that the projects would end, and we didn't backfill that with the new projects that would potentially take place. The policy, I'm perfectly comfortable with the policy. The practice of backfilling some of those would help us probably apply the policy, maybe perhaps a little bit better even.
I think, and especially being, you know, new to council and new to debt policies and that sort of thing, not new now, but a couple of years in, I think the important thing here with the metric is to allow us to, as you said, as we work this policy, have yardsticks. There's these measuring yardsticks that give you a comfort level when you decide how much debt you're going to go five years in, and then you want to take advantage of these great opportunities come along, and you don't want to be afraid to take advantage. I think the debt policy is great, what we have right now. What I think is missing for council and those to come after us are metrics that help you gain that comfort level so that you can say, as you look at these trends, in the historical trends, present trends, and then as you predict outward, how you're doing on that trend. Those metrics, whatever they are you suggest to us, Angel, to give us a comfort level to make us feel good about the debt that we take on, and that the future debt that the future councils would have to live with. I think that's what I'm looking for in this. And I would ask you now, as you've looked at these metrics, we've talked about the positives, what are the negatives? What could bind us by having too many metrics?
Well, I've thought about this a lot since our meeting, and I've talked to our advisors. I think one of my hesitations, sorry, I think one of my hesitations about incorporating, which I hear that you're not looking to incorporate, is to the extent, you know, council always has the flexibility to make the decisions that are best for the city, and that's why, as much as we strive to keep that AAA rating, first of all, there are things that are out of our control that, you know, can't be impacted, but maybe there's things that are just for the betterment of the community that maybe you lose that AAA rating because it's best for the community. So when it comes to adding more layers of, I would just hate the city to be in a position, council staff being in a position, to sit there and say, well, why did you approve this CIP, this bond package, when it's now in conflict with one of these metrics that you've identified? Certainly, there will be valid reasons for it, but I just always hesitate, and when you're put in a position where now you're doing something that's counter to what your policy or a guideline states. So that's really, was my hesitation with this.
I'd just like to emphasize, metrics should be guidelines and tripwires and warning signs and guide decision-making, not dictate decision-making, and you should always leave yourself flexibility, but you want to know the warning signs, right? If something's tanking, not going right, then you can pull up and say, okay, we're not going to do those projects now because this is happening, or the R-word's lingering at the, you know, right in front of us, which everyone says it is, so maybe, you know, there's just things like that that you have to, and I think these metrics are good for that. I think we've got to be careful not to, to your point, you know, bind ourselves too much.
I really think that. I think more than anything, that it's just simply perspectives we're looking for, guideline perspectives, but not policies that we're bound by.
So Angel, love the policy, and I think we should keep the policy, and I'm looking forward to see your tweaks at our next meeting. Thank you.
So you have what you need, Angel, from us, so that if I were to make a motion that we direct staff to prepare legislation for a first reading at the August 12th meeting and a second reading at the August 26th meeting as an update to the debt policy, you would be able to do that?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
And?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Bond redemption.
All right.
This just keeps getting more and more exciting.
I know.
I got to tell, I can hardly sit in my chair.
I know. So as I outlined in the memo for you, the city does have the opportunity to redeem or call $1,730,000 worth of outstanding bonds on December 1st of 2019. These were bonds that were originally issued in 2019, some were refundings of previous issues, some were new money issues, and the details were provided. Based on current interest rates, there is a projected savings of a whopping $20,000 when you take into consideration investment earnings on the city's cash as it currently stands today versus the interest rate on the bonds. That certainly can change as the overnight rate at Star Ohio, which would be really our baseline, changes daily. So Steph is looking for guidance from council as to whether there is a desire to call these bonds, and if so, is there a maximum amount that the city is willing to spend if the interest rates change in order to get some of this debt off of the city's books? We've heard you loud and clear at the various discussions we've had regarding the city's debt, and certainly want to present any opportunities we have, and also recognize that it might be, you might feel it's in the city's best interest, even if there's a slight cost to it, to get these bonds redeemed. So I also want to point out, we have Tom Mercuto and Brian Cooper, both are our municipal advisors with Baker Tilly, formerly known as Umba, here this evening to discuss any questions in conjunction with myself.
So if I read this correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, we are making 2.41-ish percent on our investments, and we are paying 3.5-ish on the debt.
That is correct.
Any idea what the potential transaction expenses were going to be?
Yes, I checked with our bond counsel on that. It's relatively small, a couple of thousand dollars. So I took that into account when looking at this.
So that's included in the $21,100 savings?
Yeah, it's about, yeah, it's about 20 when you take into account the fees associated with it.
There's a Fed change coming in there in the next couple of days. Did I see that? The interest rate? Lower it, does that have any impact on what we're talking about here? Yeah. I guess for me, I'd be interested in what their recommendation is, because they deal with it every day, not us.
Is that a recommendation? Come on up. Come on up.
I see you in part of the expenses, so you can...
Welcome, experts.
So I'd like to hear...
Good evening. Sure, my name is Brian Cooper with Baker Tilly. Thank you. The memo lays it out, you've got cash on hand that's earning interest, you've got a cost of debt, the net is about $20,000. So if you want to save $20,000, pay it off. If you would rather conserve your cash, because if you think about it, rates, yield curve is flat right now, so to borrow money for one year, this is gross generalization, but to borrow money for one year is 2.5%, and to borrow money for 20 years is 2.5%. That's what a flat yield curve means. So if you were going to the market to increase your debt, you would want to buy that, you would want to sell your debt into the market and lock in those low rates. And so it's just, the only thing that you're really deciding on this prepayment is the opportunity cost of the $1.7 million. You can either keep that working in your investments, or you can pay it off and net a theoretical $20,000 to the good of the city.
What's our current debt level? 177?
Let me pull up the June financial report.
I think that's where I got it, I think it's, I think it's 177. So we're talking about less than 1% of the debt here. I mean, this is such a small amount.
This is a very small amount.
Yeah, and then I looked, the next retirement opportunity is really 2021, right? Of any size at all, right? And I think that was a bigger number. So this is such a small amount, I, to me, I'm rather indifferent. If it was those bigger numbers that we would be looking at, we'd be having a different conversation.
Yeah, if we talk, when we look at refundings and other financial decisions, we look at the order of magnitude, right? So if we're talking about $20,000 right now, well, if we were talking about $200,000, I might say that's a healthy chunk of change that could do a lot of good use with the, you know, other city resources. I would probably recommend that you move forward with that. If we're doing $2 million worth of savings, then that changes the dynamics of the conversation completely.
So what's your recommendation when it's $21,100? That's the question.
Generally speaking, isn't sort of a general across-the-board, sort of like if you're looking at doing your calls and stuff, if it's north of 3%, you do it?
That's what's in our stated debt policy. But I certainly wouldn't want an opportunity to come in front of, or to go by without making council aware, because I understand that there is concern that we have too much debt outstanding, so you know, maybe at 0% savings, you're willing to move forward to call these bonds.
Doesn't sound like it, I think we've made a decision, but so everybody's on the corner.
Does anybody want to go through this?
So leave it be.
I greatly appreciate the effort and your purpose in bringing this up. I think we do better at doing that.
I guess I don't know, I don't know that it isn't worth it at all. When we come into our CIP, we would have an extra million or whatever dollars capacity that might change our thinking on some of those projects. The $20,000 is not as significant as the capacity of the million whatever that we might possibly have that would change that, that's the picture.
You could use a million seven to buy your debt back, like a stock purchase, right? Buying your debt back, or you could keep your million seven and use it for roads, other improvements.
Bingo.
And use that cash to reduce your next debt issuance by 1.7 million dollars.
Got you, yeah. That's true.
We just don't know what our next debt issuance is going to be, and how much, that's...
Correct, the projects that are currently slated for debt would be the Riverside Crossing Park and the North Pool.
So the North Pool was 7 million?
Six, well, it was six in the CIP, and then I believe the park was 7. Seven.
So 14-ish?
Yeah.
Million, which would, this would make it 12, 3.
So do we want to do something or not do it?
I would lose any house, it doesn't matter.
Appreciate the information.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper, for coming.
Perspective.
Sitting through the meeting.
Move along.
Anytime.
Yeah.
Okay, staff comments, auto-report. Dana?
Good evening, members of council, there are quite a few items in your information-only packet, a few of those I want to lift up. First of all, the auditors state of Ohio completed their audit of us for fiscal year 2018. Over the past 20-plus years, the auditors assigned the audit to an outside firm. However, for fiscal year ending 2018, the auditor state themselves conducted our audit. Now, this audit reviewed the methods, accuracy, the legality of accounts, financial reports, records, and the files of the city. Additionally, an audit of the information technology system was conducted. And I'm pleased to report that the auditor's issued an unmodified opinion and has deemed that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the respective financial position, the government activities, the business-type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city of Dublin as of December 31st of 2018. The auditors did note two minor internal control-related issues, which are described in the related management letter and as explained in the memo provided to you in your packet. City council and/or the city manager entitled to a post-audit review of the audit report, and if applicable, the management letter. For me, I'm going to decline the post-audit review, as I'm comfortable with what I've read, and I'm also fairly certain that they probably already corrected the two items in the management letter, or if not, they will be corrected very shortly, because they were relatively minor, but nonetheless, good points. Just want to let council know, as per the memo, that if any of you desire, you may also have a post-audit review led by the representatives from the auditor state's office. We recommend that that time be allocated at the August 12th council meeting. The post-audit reviews are not considered open meetings pursuant to Ohio Open Meetings Act, and as such, council would adjourn into executive session for such a meeting if any of you want to attend that. The exit conference declaration form is available so that formal signatures can be attained as required by the auditors, and those are... as required by the auditors and those are available to you if you desire to do that. And I would just ask that you let the clerk of council know if you're interested in pursuing that and then we would schedule accordingly. The last thing I want to say about this is I want to thank Angel, I want to thank Team Finance for all the great work that they're doing with our processes and procedures as outlined by the auditor's office. And again, this is a ongoing, a clean audit and one that is in keeping with our tradition. So I thank them very much. But I also want to thank our entire staff who adhere to these fiscal policies and processes. I think it's a great, a great acknowledgement of all of their effort and awareness of policies and procedures and their discipline in keeping those up. So congratulations to everyone on that. Second item I have is there was a memo in your packet regarding historic stone walls and staff was suggesting or recommending that you refer that to Community Development Committee. So we'd like for you to do that unless you feel otherwise.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll take that as a yes then. Okay, thank you very much. There is a, an, a letter or memo, rather, regarding council engagement. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, let council member Fox discuss that at her turn around table. So with that, that's all I have unless you have other questions.
Could I ask a question? I, on, on the audit, you, you noted that they're at, that they also did an audit of the information system. Is that the financial information system? That isn't security, security at large? Well, they looked at, they looked at our financial system, but they also looked at disaster recovery. I mean, it, it went beyond the scope of just the city's ERP system. So the other question I'm asking is, is, are, at the state level, are we seeing changes this due to, to cybersecurity and that? I mean, is, is it broached that and started to look at? Do you know what I'm...
They looked at, they were pretty pleased with our, I understand that the training program that we had implemented around cybersecurity and some of the, yeah, the efforts that we had put in around our protection of our systems, that was...
There's a, there's a lot of rules out there right now with financial institutions with respect to maintaining cyber...
And they're putting a lot more effort into that.
Having a disaster recovery plan, having proper follow-up procedures. We have to do it at our agency even as a financial...
And I know I've been reading about things and I'm just wondering if that's in fact happened because I know that's a concern of all of us from a cyber perspective and if that was part of that audit or not, or if that's something we're seeing change because I think that's fantastic.
It's hard to compare because this was our first year back with the state auditor's office. I can tell you in previous years in my time here, I don't know that we've ever formally had any of our auditors come in and specifically sit down with our IT folks. So this was different than anything else. So whether this happens at this level every single year, we have been notified that the state will keep us on for the 2019 audit as well. So we'll see what happens at that point in time, whether it's the same type of... I imagine they would tweak it if there's something more alarming that comes up over the course of the next couple of months.
So Kathy, just because I, I just was working at a state institution and we did complete our audit at the college level. We were told by our internal auditors that these are now new questions that they are asking of state agencies. Now, they're, they're interesting questions and they're, they maybe probably don't go quite to the level that you're looking for, but they are broadly asking about things, not just about, you know, what you're doing, but it's also about how much you're spending on things like cybersecurity. And, and then they're reporting back on those and, and requiring responses from the manager, management responses.
Yeah, I think that's, that's good, so, yeah, thank you.
Anything else, Dana? That's it, okay. Committee reports, historic Dublin facade grant recommendations. John?
Well, we're back to something that we looked at, I think, June the 6th. And this is probably the third time we brought it up and I think ARB has finally passed this. So if we could vote on the one grant for $15,000 for 75 South High Street, they're gonna put on a side patio. This is gonna become a more interesting building. I think it used to be the Hay Penny and now it's gonna have a restaurant dining option. So that's what became, you've already heard this probably two times, but that's what came...
So is that a, is that a motion?
That is a motion to prove...
I second that motion.
Thank you.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan? Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Ms. Fox? Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
I hope they don't, I think they're cool.
P&amp;Z, Jane? You got anything else, John, from those recommendations?
No.
Okay. P&amp;Z, Jane? Admin, Chris?
No, I think this is, we are in administratively good shape.
Community development, John?
Nothing, thank you.
Finance, Michael? Public services, Christina?
Nothing, but we have a meeting coming up real soon.
Okay. Coda, Kathy?
Yeah, just a quick update that this last week, Coda released its really first-ever strategic plan that the organization has put together. It's out on their website. I, I encourage you to, to look at it because it really takes a holistic look at mobility in central Ohio and charges the organization to do some very interesting strategic things relating to technology, partnership, combining, consolidating options and, and looking at the overall economic impact. So I think it's a, I think it's a, it was fun to be, that Dublin was at the table to be part of this and I think it's a, it's a good read and I, quite informative. So I'd encourage you to take a look. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Dublin Friendship Association, Christina?
Nothing, Ms.
Morpsy, Chris?
No, they too took a July break from public meetings.
How about Licking Union Champagne County Regional Planning Commission? Logan, sorry, Logan?
Nothing to report.
Northwest 33 Quarter Group?
We're gonna meet next Friday, but I would like to just quickly say I had an opportunity along with, I know a large number of our staff, to be out at the TRC Smart Center opening. So about a year after the groundbreaking there, we got to see some of the very, very interesting and new testing facilities that are gonna be available for autonomous and connected vehicles for the advantage of, you know, all sorts of organizations across the world really and in the region. So I think it was a really demonstrable example of this stuff is becoming real and in our backyard and we're part of it. So it was a, it was a wonderful opening. So congratulations. It really is.
Unbelievable. Thank you, Kathy. Dublin Arts Council, John?
I've got a new art show coming up on August the 6th at 6:00 PM. You're all invited. And I think that concluded the Saturday in the parks ended last Sunday night. It was really successful, a lot of people. Whole hill was completely filled up, so they're doing their usual great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Dublin Board of Education, Christina?
Nothing, till school's...
Washington Township, my friends back there. You guys got anything? Proud and happy? I am gonna bring up one thing chief here in just a second when we get to roundtable. Dublin Bridges, Jane? Nothing? Okay, we're all getting back into the swing here. Roundtable, Jane?
I'll just bring up the memo notice on council communications. I think I've talked about this a little bit, brainstormed a little bit and with Nancy and some of the staff about ways that we as council members can relate more to the public and garner more information from them. And as are the economic development consulting groups said to us, you know, it's kind of nice to see council members becoming more and more engaged in some of the things that are going on here in the city. So these are just suggestions that we came up with as possibilities. Not that we would use all of them, but I would encourage you to read through of them, through them. Primarily, we're looking at doing some updates to our council webpage, maybe looking at utilizing our web media to talk about some of the things that we were doing here. Not everybody usually turns on the TV set to watch us. I don't know that we're on the high end of the ratings or anything. I know there's a couple people, but maybe my dad. But other than that, I don't know too many people who watch this. But, but for those who don't, we're gonna give you an opportunity to find out what we do in other ways. And so maybe the council webpage will have some additions here. Thinking about updating the bios, looking at ways that people can communicate with us easily, how to reach us easily. Maybe there's also a new tool that we're looking at, Granicus, that allows you, instead of having to look through the entire meeting, you might be able to go to a topic and find out what you're looking for.
That is a standing idea.
Okay, so that's one. Maybe a few council appearances. We do show up, we pop up like whack-a-mole sometimes at, at certain functions, but it might be nice if people know where they might find us. So a little bit more forth thought in that. Utilizing the neighborhood news as a publishing tool to talk about some of the things that are going on in our neighborhoods, in our wards and across the city and what council's talking about. And using that as an online tool to, to maybe get some survey results so that when we have questions about how residents think and feel before... I know we're working on IT tools that will do this and hopefully we'll have some instant responses. But Nextdoor, as Sue mentioned, is a really good survey tool. So maybe utilizing that to get a little bit more input in here for council members. Including some of the council actions in the Dublin News &amp; 90 and looking at the CIP as added council action as a category. So for weekly digital content planning to include in the city's weekly social media plan. Johnny's helping with this technology. I know, I know this is... So a couple other things, talking about coffee with a council member. I know it was, it was good for you, Dana, and I think it might be good for council members to do that. Office hour opportunities, if anybody wants to hold those. There are so many ways at the, at the pools. No one is required to do any of these, but if, if these are things that appeal to you, they might be opportunities. Community conversations, I think, are really important. We don't have town hall meetings, but now that we have the library and great places to gather, community conversations might be something that we could engage in. Solutions Saturdays was another, was another suggestion. Quarterly or a biannual opportunity for residents to gather and just talk about specific community issues, what they have on their minds. And then roundtable discussions. This is, this goes under the collaboration headline. Just convening interested residents, talking about community challenges. Hold them in the new cafe of the new municipal building, at the library, in the, in a park. Just ways that we can just start to touch base more. So I, we welcome, I welcome, and I know that staff welcomes, any suggestions you might have. Throw some input about your thoughts on this, what you think would, would be good, what you think wouldn't be. It's just an opportunity to get out there and, and do a little bit more meet and greet and hear what they have to say. After all, we're their representatives.
I think there's some great ideas there and I think the new city hall will make it much easier for us to engage. You know, now we just don't have any space and at that point in time, we would have, you know, a little corner kind of carved out that we could do some of, do coffees and, you know, if people were, had any interest in coming, they, that'd be great. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yep.
Thank you.
I think, yeah, I was gonna say, I think, I think it's great. So from us, sort of if we decide we would like to do some of these, what are you, what are you suggesting?
Well, I guess I'd like to hear if you have buy-in on some of them and we can begin to start initiating a few. I don't think we can jump on all of them, but talk to staff and, and come up with a plan to begin to initiate a few of these and kind of work our way forward. I don't think any of them are too tough.
I love it.
If you feel good about it, we can, we can bring back some suggestions on what we'll start with.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I think you do it. You just gotta be careful, too many of us show up and all of a sudden, we've got meeting problems.
Well, that's true too. So we'll have to figure out how to strategize on that. Yeah, we'll plan.
Sign up genius.
Great, thank you.
Anything else, Kathy?
The only point I'd make, I downloaded the Irish Festival app on my phone, if you haven't done that yet. It works, it's very slick, it's very cool. I will only warn you that you'll start listening to different bands and you will find that you're, yeah. The time gets away from you. But it was very well done, so congratulations to the team that worked on that. I think that is most excellent. So I look forward to celebrating and congratulations to Chris and Carol Clinton, who are the honorary chairs of the festival this year. And thanks very much for all the hard work, I know, from the staff that goes into making that. Always awesome, so, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. John?
Yeah, ditto on the Irish Festival honorees. And then I was just checking when, see what the weather was gonna be on the second, third and fourth so we don't have to buy that insurance policy, it looks like, for $41,000. And it looks like it's gonna be 85, 86 and 87 with lows 61, 63 and 64. So it's gonna be a great weekend, so let's hope everybody gets out to enjoy it. Right, we got a chance at turning a profit and doing good things. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Michael?
Just a couple of thanks to Megan and Paul Hammersmith. We had some neighbors in our area that were convinced a dead tree hanging over a bike path was gonna fall and kill somebody. And Megan got out the very next day and had it removed. Well, you didn't remove it yourself, somebody did it.
Good work, Megan.
Yeah, but, but anyway...
She took out that karate chop and took it down.
She said, she said she'd make it happen, so that made the neighbors happy. And then some sidewalk repairs were, were done. Couple were really raised up, I know because I almost tripped over my walker last month. It's about an inch and a half up and they, they fixed that post haste. And then finally, Paul was down on, back at Coventry Woods, the one path, there's a very steep incline down and then it turns very sharply. We've had several people wipe out, we had a couple kids down there at the bottom laying, wiped the bikes out. And I know you're looking into it, I don't know, checking to see if anything can be done, but it's very steep and it's a very, very hairpin turn there, so. Widen the corner out a little bit. Good, well, I appreciate that and I know the neighbors do too, so thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Christina?
I just wanted to congratulate Christine and Michelle on launching the Forever Dublin website. It's got some great information on it. I've actually run into a few people that I know that have gone and checked it out and they're pretty impressed with what the staff has put together. I know that was sort of the next milestone in the work that, that we've been working on and so I very much appreciate it. And then Christine has another event coming up on August 20th. I won't be able to be there because I'm taking my daughter to college, but I know it will be well-attended as the others have. And so just want to appreciate staff for all the work that they've done. It's really great, meaningful work for all of our community, but particularly those who can be the most vulnerable and need to know where they can turn for services. So I, I think it's fantastic. If you haven't had a chance to check out the website yet, please do. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Chris?
The information-only items, the, the memos. I saw about the Brandon Pond project update, so I, it sounds like it's going out to bid, so we'll see costs related to that here shortly, so looking forward to seeing those. About the historic walls maintenance memo, I think it's vitally important that we maintain our historic walls, really all of the stone walls throughout the city. I think you have to do nothing more than to drive down Riverside Drive and you see the degradation of many of the stone walls south of our community. And it's really, it's a shame and it really takes from the aesthetic experience of headed south. So I'm all in on preserving our walls and building as many as we possibly can that would be, would be true to the character of our city. So hopefully you all will chime in and give some direction for that because I'd really like to see us pursue that.
Agreed.
I think every head is shaking, so I, hopefully that we can take that as direction. Yeah. And they're just, they're beautiful, you just can't... The ones that were recently constructed down Dublin Road to the south are, I, I know it's a lot of money, but that's money well spent, that's really art. That's art in public places in and of itself. So, you know, it is, it's fantastic. I'd like to see us do as much of it as we possibly can. I wanted to thank staff for all of those that have traveled near and far, for your training reports. I found them very helpful and informative and it's just, I appreciate knowing the things that we're learning and the places that we're going and, I sound like a Dr. Seuss book, but all the places you'll go. But I, it's just, I just appreciate the, the pursuit of knowledge and the pursuit of excellence and to know when and where we're doing those things. So thank you for those that went and took time to write about your experiences. The CIP Study Design and Construction Outlook Report for the 161 Cos Gray Roundabout, it seemed like that was possibly getting some, hitting some bumps and getting some delays. And that's unfortunate because that is, it is such an underperforming intersection. And the, the traffic light is certainly a plus, but it, it's a partial plus. People are, are, there's a lot of traffic violations. If, if we wanted to spend a lot of time in that area, you would have a lot of experiences with people because people are going straight through that shouldn't go straight through, they're turning left, they're turning right. They're, they're treating it as though it were a normal intersection and it is not signalized as such. So anything we can do, I... So anything we can do, I, I really think safety probably is a very real issue there. And anything that we can do to move the completion of that roundabout up would, I think, be money well spent. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Two quick, two quick things, and one is an invitation, that's why I was going to come back around to, Chief. I think most of you have been to my friend Sri Gadam's house up in Tartan, and he and his friend Sankar, and I was mispronouncing, Manguparam, they started a nonprofit organization here in Dublin. It was after the, the tragedy with the Westerville police officers. And they, these two guys have funded this entirely by themselves. They're very prominent members of our Indian community. And the idea behind this nonprofit was to fund scholarships for the first responders of the families of Washington Township and our Dublin Police Department. And Sri and I met with, and, and Dr. Hoadley's going to be involved, and Paige Warren-Brock is involved, and a lot of really prominent people around our community are involved. And they are, like I said, they have self-funded this, and it is getting up and off the ground. Heinz and I and the chief met with Sri a couple of times. And the, the, the design of the project is to support the families of our, the first responders that respond to our needs, regardless of whether they, where they may live or what their family's need may be, whether it's academic scholarship, whatever it is, to be there for them in between those spikes and horrible times, be there consistently every year. And so these guys have put together a board of students from our schools who are going to participate along with, like I said, a number of really prominent people to award these scholarships to these families every year. And I think it's just this Wednesday, I just got back from vacation. And, and Chief, I'll get you information, and I know it is spur of the moment. If there is any way either you or one of the lieutenants could be there, there's going to be a couple of the boards of directors and a lot of these students, and they wanted me to extend an invitation to all of you if any of you wanted to show up. I will, I'll send out a text.
I've got the address. You need it. Do you want it now, or you want?
Yeah, just, you might as well.
It's, um, 7209 Deacon Court. It's up in Tartan.
Tartan.
And is that Sri's house? I think that's Sankar's, Sankar's house.
Sankar and Sri are wonderful guys, and every time I meet them, they're, well, I've become very close friends with them, and they are always asking, what can we do to give back? We, they don't ever ask for anything. They say, what can we do to give back? And this was launched, it was their idea, and nobody else's, and they have self-funded this thing. They've, they've done all, they've gone through the Columbus Foundation, they got the legal documents in place, and it's set up, and it's functioning, and they're getting ready to start distributing funds. And I greatly appreciate it, Chief, your willingness, and Justin, I, I know that Heinz really appreciated what they were doing. And, and these guys are the real deal. They're putting their money where their mouth is and really doing what they can to help our community for these two unbelievable organizations that serve us every single day. So that's Wednesday night, I think it's 6:30-ish or something like that. Have you got that, Justin? Is it 6:30 at that address? And I, you know, he asked me to ask all of you guys, so I know RSVP is necessary, but he's serving some food and, and just having a conversation to get to know these kids and, and really to get to know Justin, the chief, more to make sure that the money's going to the right place, which I'm sure that it will. The only other thing I have is, John, do I understand you have been named one of the most admired executives in the Columbus Business First C-Suite Award Program?
Yes.
Yes.
Humbly, humbly, that's not.
Well.
It got the wrong way.
Congratulations to you for that. That has taken how many years in your career?
70.
70 years, and you've finally gotten there. So congratulations for that, John. That's really fantastic, fantastic. Okay, with that, we are adjourned.